Good morning. It is 9:30. Welcome to the August 24th meeting of the Council Committee of the Full Meeting. I'd like to welcome our Mayor, Mr. Richard Arden, Council, Cao, Mr. Given, our personnel helping us with making this a better meeting, and all the members at large, who may be members and staff of ours, who may be attending virtually. Council, you had the agenda circulated to you beforehand. It begins with an agenda. And prior to proving the agenda, I would like to know if there's any additions, please. Any additions to the agenda, Council?
I do, under new business, not for discussion today, but a topic for future, for future consideration. It's municipal sapos.
Municipal sapos.
Yeah, seven point four.
Seven point one. And the other additions? Deputy Mayor Jurnow?
The administration would like to request an additional late item, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. There was a report that was circulated late last night to council. We asked if we could add that to the agenda.
Any specific part of the agenda that?
We recommend new business under seven point five.
Seven point five. Thank you for that. Any other additions to the agenda? There are none. They haven't approved. Somebody, a motion to approve the agenda, Council Calpren. Thank you. On paper. Also in your digital package is the minutes of the August 3rd, maybe the whole minute, maybe of the whole meeting minutes. May I have on approved those minutes, please? Also, the Mora? On paper. And now up to item number five, your presentations at 5.1 Evergreens Foundation Capital Plan. You have it patented in our package.
Deputy Mayor Jurnow, I believe we may also have Kristen Chambers, the Cao of the Evergreens Foundation with us virtually, and I believe she was going to make a physical presentation.
She has now appeared on our screen. Welcome, Kristen, and for yours.
It's very nice to be here today, even virtually. The last time I was here with your council, talking about the capital plan, I was able to be in person, but it's still nice to be able to reach out to everyone and start to see everybody getting back together in person. So thank you for the opportunity. As you would have seen in your packages, we always try as the Evergreens Foundation to update the municipalities and the councils as often as appropriate. We're a very busy, rapidly growing organization, and we felt it was prudent to get some information about the future of our capital programs out to the councils, as we have made some pretty large advances in our capital strategy since the last time I presented to your council. So currently, we have completed the Parkland Lodge project in Edson, incredibly successful. We're actually just about at 100% capacity right now, which is excellent. So we've been able to fill all of the rooms with a waitlist. So very wonderful for the community of Edson. I'm very happy to see that project moving ahead. Pine Valley Lodge in Hinton, actually, we will be moving our existing residents into the Pine Valley Lodge into our first phase about mid, probably around September 15th. So that's very exciting as well for that ability to get our existing residents there. Then we'll demolish our existing building, kind of move into phase two. So moving along quite, quite rapidly with that. But the purpose of today's meeting is just to talk about where we see ourselves going as a foundation with our future projects. So there was a letter that was circulated along with a couple of project updates for the Victor Lake Seniors Lodge project, Indigenous Lodge project, and also our next project, which will be the Wildwood Seniors Lodge in Yellowhead County. So the Victor Lake project is a very incredibly exciting project for, for many reasons. We definitely have understood for a few years that we were underserving the Indigenous elder population within the MD Greenview Grand Cash area and struggled culturally to meet a lot of the needs of the seniors. With the Indigenous Housing Capital Plan being re-released as a grant program, it was initially released by the provincial government as a more of an investment co-ownership project, but when they re-released it as grants, we thought that this would be a very fitting project, and we're absolutely thrilled to be one of two projects which was approved in the province. So an incredible success for the foundation and as well an incredible success for the elders in the Victor Lake and Grand Cash surrounding areas is the lands that they are on, they are on status, and they are cooperative lands, which brings a bit of a different lens to the land ownership. So it was a big win for the Indigenous elders as well, for the fact that the province did recognize them and their lands as appropriate for fitting within this provincial program. So just a very, very proud moment, I think, for all of us to be able to achieve this. So that project, we did receive $2.25 million from the provincial government. We are working right now to apply for any and all grants that are available through the federal government, of course, through CMHC, whether that's seed funding or co-investment funding, which is the, the two lenses right now that the federal government is, through the National Housing Strategy, is offering funding through, as well as the potential of working with the municipality of MD Greenview directly to assist us with some of the potential infrastructure challenges that we have operating on, looking at building on those lands. So very exciting project for us, and it will be fascinating to be able to kind of pioneer that Indigenous elders lodge out within that, that region. So I don't know if anyone has questions on that before I move on to Wildwood. No?
Congratulations to the efforts of Evergreen. Very progressive. They've done a lot of planning, and things have gone looking good for it. We'll never know, of course, because these facilities are usually fairly crowded. Also like to thank the involvement of our Councilor Butler, who's been on the board for entire four years, really. Yes. Thank you for that. Not done. So that's good to hear. Any questions, discussions, comments? If she's, she's not here. Sorry. There was a pause there, and I couldn't understand very clear.
Yeah, so I can just talk briefly about the Wildwood project. So as in our previous capital update that I had given to council, we always knew that the, the need for seniors housing within the east end of Yellowhead County was very vast. And actually, Yellowhead County did a study in 2014, which really indicated the large senior population that they have within the east end of Yellowhead County. So we did have some land donated in Wildwood by the Yellowhead County, which we have been able to subdivide and get title on, which is fantastic. We will be looking at, the term in there is a greenfield, greenfield. So what that basically means is that it's a brand new facility. There's nothing currently on the site. There's no site restrictions, and it really speaks to how we are looking at the culture of the residents that we wish to have living within the facility with that very agricultural lens. We always try to look at our, our facilities of what does a day in the life of a senior in that region look like, and how can we mimic that, and how we're designing our buildings, how we're laying them out, and what will really encourage them to live fully and live with that best life. So we're very excited about the land that was provided by Yellowhead County will be absolutely perfect to really embrace that agricultural lifestyle, which many of the seniors within that region are used to. That will be a 45-unit facility, and we will be building it with the capacity to go up to 70 units if required in a future phase. So just trying to future-proof some of these facilities, as we know that, that, that senior boom is there. However, it does also trail off in 2046. So we really need to focus on keeping our facilities sustainable to an appropriate size to serve the needs of the seniors, but also to still be sustainable long-term for the foundation's operations past the, the baby boom of seniors that's, that's coming through. So very excited about that project as well. We have already secured seed funding through CMHC for the Wildwood facility. So that was in the amount of $225,000, which enabled us to move ahead with a lot of the site requirements. We've done some geo-technical studies. We've done some preliminary design works, as you can see from what was included in your package. So it's always a wonderful thing when you see CMHC support a project so quickly off the hop, because it means we're checking a lot of the boxes. So very hopeful that we'll continue to be successful, working with CMHC and, and getting all the funding that's available through the federal government currently, as well as for both projects, Victor Lake and Wildwood, we will be watching very closely as the provincial government rolls out their affordable housing strategy action plan, which will be coming forth hopefully soon. We're hoping September. They said fall. So what, which part of the fall, we don't know. But there may be some funding partnership opportunities, which of course we'll always explore as well, moving ahead. So, so very exciting things for us. As you can see through the capital plan, my intention is always to keep that up to date as we're making advances and bring that back to council, so you can be informed of both the potential capital requisition piece, as well as how it impacts the potential for our operating requisitions, as we know that those are a per-unit cost, and the more units we have, the requisition does go up under the current funding model through the provincial government. And also, just to give the council's opportunities to have any questions answered through myself, if, if there's anything you'd like to know.
Thank you. My apologies for mishandling the earlier situation. Thanks for your presentation. Again, good work being done by Evergreen for our region. Questions, comments from council?
Thank you for that, Mrs. Chambers. And it looks like a lot of work is being done across the region, although it's a bit glaring that Zone 5 doesn't have much happening. And I just, I know there's some challenges there for sure. I just wanted to, you know, selfishly ask, I guess, on, in, within our, first, within our zone, what is our seniors' facilities? Like, what do the, the waitlists look like for those? And is there, is, do you see a, a need for more housing, seniors housing in Zone 5? Or are we, are we kind of hitting the same offerings as the other zones are receiving?
Yeah, so excellent question. Actually, when we did the initial report, when it spoke about the Jasper area, the need for housing within Jasper is exactly what we have, to serve at the same level as what we're serving the other communities by, by space. So the one thing that skews our numbers a little bit is because we have Gilbert Health Services spaces in the, the SL4 and the DAL area. That does throw our, our requirements off a little bit, as if we didn't have those spaces within the facility, we would be able to obviously take on more lodge residents, but fully understanding that that DAL is an incredible thing to have within the Jasper community and, and very welcomes. So our waitlists, they do fluctuate in Jasper. They're definitely not as, as high as our other communities, and we do see the greatest demand in that higher level of care. The, that SL4 and the DAL level seems to be where a lot of the, the backlog of waitlists and urgent housing requirements come in. So again, our board was always trying to meet, in our capital strategy, was to meet the needs of the communities as equally as possible. And where we've seen this up to that timeline is that we will be continuing to serve Jasper to the same level as we're serving in Edson, or we're serving in Hinton, even with the 100-unit facility going into Hinton. It still puts us, serving the communities in the same level. We're certainly understanding that if land ever opens up in Jasper, and there's a possibility for us to look ahead at, you know, really what does that long-term housing look like in Jasper, we certainly would be very keen to jump onto that, of course. But at this time, we feel like we're, we're managing quite well with being able to look after the seniors within the area and hoping that if there is any even temporary overflow, that we're able to pick up some of that within our facility in Hinton, which, you know, we're hoping we can say, you know, here's an opportunity if someone's in a dire circumstance, to be then kind of put first back onto the waitlist to move back to their home community if required. So hoping we have a little bit more wiggle room there to help people that are in some urgent need.
Any more questions, comments? Councilor Butler?
Thanks, Mr. Chambers. Can you just talk a little bit about how government funding came into the two projects in Edson and Hinton? Because I know that one of the challenges to face at Evergreens is we have to try to look at a long-term capital plan, but we generally don't know while we're doing that, what kind of government funding we're expecting. If I remember correctly, we saw considerable government funding come into play for both of those facilities after we actually embarked on the, the commitment to build those two, which I think was in 2014. Could you just describe that process, how some of that funding came into play after the projects were already planned for?
I'm sorry, did you say Parkland Lodge and, and Pine Valley? Is that what you were?
I, I thought so. I believe that there was government funding that came in for both of those projects, after the project had already been committed to by it.
Correct. So when I came to council in 2014, there was a letter that was circulated, very similar to the letter that was sent to your council with this package, with a request for a motion of support for the capital plan of the Evergreens Foundation. And the letters of support from the municipalities definitely help us with our funding applications when the province is able to understand that both, not just our board unanimously supports it, which is wonderful, but also that the municipalities are very aware of the overall capital plan of the Evergreens Foundation. So that's enabled us to be in a position with our Parkland Lodge in Edson. With the initial letter that was sent out, we didn't know if we would get any funding whatsoever. We ended up receiving initially $15 million through the Lodge Renewal Funding Program. That's what it was called at the time. And as the project, so it was supposed to be a kind of a joint partnership then between the provincial government and the Evergreens Foundation. During the NDP government, they were very interested in investment dollars, not grants, and that's how they were releasing funding. But they were struggling to come up with kind of a tendency and common agreements where the management bodies and the province both held ownership of facilities moving forward. So as we were nearing the end of the project, I was able to work with the Ministry of, of Housing and Seniors and ended up getting the project fully funded, which was pretty amazing. I was, I was quite shocked. So amazing what you throw out there and they'll catch. But it, it was a struggle. They needed to close off, you know, close to their year end. It was a, a model that, that they were struggling with. And very fortunately for the Evergreens Foundation, it was, because the Parkland Lodge is a facility, because it was one of the original lodges built within the province, it was owned by the government and, and continues to be to this day. So I was able to use that funding strategy to say, okay, you know what, if, if you, this is something you guys can fully fund, as it is your facility, and I'd be happy to have you fully funded and just operate it and not have to take that piece of it. And that really enabled us to also move ahead rapidly with our program for the Pine Valley Lodge in Hinton, because the funds that we had allocated for Parkland Lodge were now available to move forward with Pine Valley, which was excellent. So moving on with Pine Valley, we aggressively worked with CMHC to see what funding was available for them, because of the capital reserves that we have, puts us in an incredible position to naturally rise to the top for funding applications with CMHC, because we have cash in hand, and we have a very strong capital program. So with the funding, we were able to reserve from the Parkland Lodge win. It enabled us to receive over $10 million, a very low interest loan through the co-investment funding program with CMHC. And on top of that, there is a $1.8 million forgivable loan portion. So essentially, it's like a grant, but under their, their program, it's called a forgivable loan. So that was wonderful as well, to be in a position where we can work with, with CMHC for a bit of this funding. And again, the ability to have that long-term funding option through CMHC has given us the ability to use some of our cash to continue to move ahead with this capital program and leverage hopefully some other grant programs in the, grant or loan programs in the future through CMHC with the good use of our additional cash flows. So we're happy to see that. With the two projects we have on the table as well, we'll be pursuing the same things. So there's, there is basically any program that's available out there, we will continue to apply for. And again, hopefully, as I said earlier, with already getting attention on the Victor Lake Indigenous Lodge, there's a lot of Indigenous funding that is available through the federal government right now that we're hoping to access. And with the Wildwood Lodge already having been approved for seed funding, we know that we are checking their boxes. So we are hopeful, and of course, we'll pursue all avenues to first get funding through federal and provincial government, and the municipal piece is always to just kind of make up the difference.
Thank you. Councilor McGraw?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Jurnow, and thank you very much for your presentation. Mrs. Chambers, it's lovely to see you here on Zoom. Just wanting to take a moment to express gratitude. Our region is, is certainly lucky to have you at the helm and to have you and your team working towards all of what you're doing. You're taking risks and you're boldly putting yourself, isation out there to receive more and more funding. And certainly, the people that benefit are us and our family members and our community members and the residents of all of the region that you serve. So thank you very much. I'm very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
You did, yes. I was hesitant. But thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chambers, for, for the report. It's very thorough, much appreciated. And thank you for forcing the opportunity to engage with us. It's important that we hear from you from time to time. So I thank you for that. A couple of general questions I have. With the dissolution of the town of Grand Cash, we now have Evergreens Municipal District of, Evergreens as part of, pardon me, Municipal District of Ever, Greenview is part of Evergreens now. Has that changed the allocation of burden within Evergreens itself, or is that beyond scope? What did, what did Review bring to the table that might have been in addition to what Grand Cash brought to the table in terms of assessments?
So we actually, we've, MD Greenview has always been a board member of the Evergreens Foundation. So we had seven, seven members previously, and with the dissolution of the town of Grand Cash, it went down to six board members. So that, that was a change for us. But the MD Greenview, essentially, it, it brought up their assessment, absorbing in the, the town of Grand Cash. So MD Greenview is actually our second largest contributor, based on, of course, equalized assessment. So all things are equal, but they do contribute a large portion. We have the portion of MD Greenview that goes all the way up to Musaro Lake. So we're, it's quite a large, vast area of the MD, actually, that, that falls under the Evergreens Foundation. So they're definitely a big, big contributor, and very excited to see us working on the Victor Lake project within, although the town of Grand Cash is theirs, or the Hamlet of Grand Cash or village, or I'm not quite sure what the terminology is they have for it now. They're very excited to see the Indigenous Lodge being built within the MD lands and the impact that will have on their elders in those communities specifically.
Thank you for that. I'm equally excited, and I appreciate the challenge of a regional board to focus on regional needs. So to that extent, both Review or near Grand Cash and recognizing the needs of the Indigenous population up there, I think that's really important that you think for, for that. I wonder whether you could speak to whether or not there is a benchmark amount for construction of facilities based on, on bed count. And I appreciate economies of scale will make that fluctuate. But I, I will admit to a bit of sticker shock when I read the report. These amounts, and I appreciate that the, the Evergreens Board has worked through this, and I wouldn't want to set a guest, but excluding land, we are looking at per-bed costs, significant amounts. And I'm assuming that for the larger one, the Wildwood one, there will be additional costs to add the additional 25 units. So it's 17 million for 45 units, and the others, 7 million for 12 units, which, when you exclude land, is apparently high. So is there a benchmark that you work towards for, for unit costs?
There is some design guidelines that we work with the province of Alberta to, to try and meet. So there, there is some kind of a base unit cost. It's very difficult for us building in urban areas, as the infrastructure costs are quite large. So as I mentioned with the Indigenous Lodge in, in Victor Lake, that is one of our greatest struggles, is essentially, it is unserviced land. We will be bringing everything from, the opportunity is, will we be somehow finding a way to tie into municipal water source in Grand Cash, or will we be operating with a well system? We'll have, you know, potential for pump-out septic. There's, it's propane heat at the moment. There's no natural gas to the site. Is that what we'll be doing? So those estimates are quite high on the Victor Lake project, which is why we will be working with the MD Group specifically on any ways that they may be able to help bring that cost down for us. In the, yeah, the Indigenous Capital Plan, that is one of the, the biggest struggles overall, is that generally the lands that you're building on are, are very difficult from a servicing perspective. So the reality of the construction cost is about $5 million, but there's a, a $2 million wildcard in there when it comes to the servicing and infrastructure piece. We have just on Friday actually posted the RFP online for our prime consultant. And once we have our prime consultant on board, we'll be working with them to really hone in the design phase, as well as specifics surrounding the infrastructure side. And we do expect that number to go down once we've really ironed out what our options are for, you know, construction and, and that infrastructure piece, as well as a meeting with the MD Greenview to discuss any of their willingness to help us on the infrastructure side on September 21st. So absolutely, seniors lodges are, they're expensive to build. There's a large amount of common area spaced, quality of life space, we like to call it, that is required for the senior programming and to really make sure we're meeting all those requirements. But it does come with a higher price per door, definitely. The board has made it a, a priority that, you know, we want to create seniors facilities, as I said, that are future-proofed. So nobody wants to retire into a hotel room. And so we want to make sure that we have rooms that are, have that home-like feel. We want to And so we want to make sure that we have rooms that are, have that home-like feel. We want to make sure that we have all of the required amenity spaces so that we're able to move ahead. Not just for the seniors we have currently, but for future generation seniors as well, that we have facilities that, that are attractive and will serve long-term needs in the community. So that's a kind of our, our overall goal. And again, we do work in line with the Province of Alberta's design guidelines, but it's, it's not cheap to, to build. The other thing is as well as due to our partnerships that we have with Alberta Health Services, we do have to build to a higher building code. Seniors lodges specifically are able to be built to a residential C building code. If you do not have any contracts with Alberta Health Services. But we know as we have in Jasper, that is a very important piece for the rural communities. And enabling us to build to that higher building code and have those partnerships is another great way that we can future-proof. But again, you are building to more of a healthcare stand, standard, which is again ups that that per unit cost as well with constructability and firewalls and all of those type of things. So those are a few of the, the items that push the, the prices up a little.
Well, thank you for that. I could not have stated a more thorough answer. So thank you for giving us that additional context about building codes, amenities, space and servicing, all which are critical and embedded in that. It weren't necessarily as evident to me as perhaps it should have been, but thank you very much for that as well. Thank you. Any more questions, comments?
I guess just thanks very much again to Chambers to come to the specific request. The Board of Evergreens did direct administration to go and present to the six councils and request a motion of support. And it's important to recognize that Evergreens does have requisition authority. Technically, we have the same authority, similar authority to schools to, to to requisition, but at the same time speaking to the capital plan and the ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the capital plan and being sort of ready to take, to take up grants as they become available from the province and CMHC. We have to keep our capital plan up to date. And we need to be able to demonstrate that our member councils and municipalities are in support of the capital plan. It's an important piece. So that's why we're here today asking for a motion of support. And that we've chosen to specifically include these two projects next in line for development. There. So we're asking for this support so that we're always able to demonstrate when funding becomes available, that we're in position to move forward. Because that's how you get my, my reasons, Chambers pointed out. You don't get grants by sitting around with a sketch on a piece of paper and saying, we'd like to build this one day. You have to keep moving and keep spending some of those pre-development dollars and being as close to shallow-ready as you can because it's organizations that are in that state of readiness with a future-looking capital plan that get the grant money. And often we don't know whether we're going to get grant money and, and this, the reports about these two projects are very upfront about that. We're very likely to see more grant money for some of these projects. But we will never know if we can't demonstrate that we are already moving ahead and that was the case with Ed Smith. So that's the reason that we're looking for that motion of support. And I would propose that we bring that motion to the next regular meeting. Address specifics of that motion. And I would certainly hope that this council is on charity others, whether the region will pass that motion or something similar to it, just to demonstrate support for the means of having a plan.
Should this committee have a motion?
Mr. Given?
Sure. Deputy Mayor Jono, the intention of committee was to refer this motion on council for consideration. That's just one of the format of committee recommend council. And then the motion is contained in the submission from Evergreens. Ultimately, there's always alternatives, council, council could refer the request to administration for a report back. I think Ms. Chambers has done a pretty extensive report and I'm not sure that administration is likely to provide any additional detail beyond what she's provided. But there are at least those two alternatives. I suppose third, you could receive this presentation for information, essentially taking into action. So just if you wish to move this forward, it would be a motion, committee recommend council. And then the motion is
You are a representative of Evergreen. I think it's appropriate that you make that recommend for that motion to recommend. The committee recommend to council to indicate our support for Evergreens Foundation. While there. Someone might like to oh, comment or a question or debate? Go ahead.
Just the wording of the motion. To follow practice, the food discovery, I understood the motion. Council recommend that council include the following motion. And, and recite the motion. It's a slightly different. That, that is what I understood the motion to be. Sort of supportive of that.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor Jono, Mayor Ireland is correct. There is a suggested motion from Evergreens contained in the report. It's sort of a few pages in, which reads, recognizing the requisitioning authority of the Evergreens Foundation, we confirm our support for the foundation strategic plan and support the Evergreens Foundation, the development of new senior supportive housing in Wildwood and Victor Lake. And so my suggestion would be that committee recommend council endorse the following motion and then motion as.
We are all clear on the motion? That is my move. We are all clear on the motion. Show of hands on favor. Motion to recommend to council. Thank you. Before we close, just thank Council of God. Before we close, I'm really pleased with the report. Pleased with the planning, the future planning. Also like to see the upgrade in the standard for these people, as mentioned. We don't want to retire to hotel rooms. And as I spend a lot of time with my parents, I see a lot of those and it is not pleasant. So again, my congratulations for, for good student planning on this. We'll move on now to the, thank you.
Thank you. See you guys.
I just wanted to say your support because of our recent experience over the last 19 months of having motions come to the table in, in various ways that I understood the motion from top to bottom and when I voted right off the bat. I understood exactly what you intend.
Might we move on? Item six of the agenda, business arising from the minutes of the August 3rd meeting, committee. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. That was an excellent segue from Council of Demora speaking about intent of motions. So the business that I have arising from the minutes is with respect to motion number three, four, five slash 21. So two weeks ago, we heard a presentation from volleyball with asked the motion. And I know that there was substantial discussion about what we meant by the motion. But it's not reflected, I think, in the motion. And I have no doubt that is the motion that we passed. But I am left wondering about its scope of work report and what that means and how this motion is to be interpreted by administration. Because I thought there was some discussion on scope of work about whether or not this might get included in ongoing work, but the motion was never amended. And whatever the intent was, we voted on a motion and it carried unanimously. But I'm not sure that it doesn't that. So it, it is, I think, of vital importance that we understand our motions thoroughly and not proceed on the basis well. I I know what so-and-so is talking about. I get the gist of the motion all the way. This, I think this is a good example of that great care is required when we point like motions. And so I think we have left ourselves and administration in a difficult position with this particular motion. So I don't know what scope of work report administration might be looking for. Is it just scope of work with respect to volleyball court expansion and wishing, or is it a different scope of work related to a different project altogether? And I raised that as business arising and I don't know that we can fix it. But moving forward, it was business to which we should pay particular attention.
Thanks for that, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor Jono, well, to support what Mayor Ireland is saying, I think if it is important, you know, the the process we're using now is council makes the motion and what's in the motion is what administration will do. And I, on this item specifically, what administration is working towards is presenting as a part of the 2022 budget considerations, an item around the volleyball court expansion, which would include reference to the other activity, the larger activity center project. And as a reminder, there won't be any construction happening at the activity centers part of major operation in 2021. That would all be in future years. But at that time, we were expecting to present to council whether or not the volleyball court expansion would fit in with that larger project. And we would have recommendations for council on how you may support the volleyball court expansion if you chose to. And so that's how we are interpreting that motion. So there wouldn't be anything that would show up between now and budget time. And at budget time, we would present how that project may or may not fit in with other capital projects that are proposed for 2020. So just so the council knows how we're interpreting what was, and which I think is a pretty direct interpretation of what the motion actually says. And I think Mayor Ireland is correct that it council meant something different. We just have to make sure that we, that we're clear on that when we make motions.
Well, I thought that's a very astute observation by the way. I think that, you know, there was some nuance to the conversation that I think that we wanted to have reflected in motion and unless, you know, you see them specifically written down in front of you sometimes. That intent, it could be there, but not reported in the manner which we were intended to go. So I, I totally agree with what there is saying.
Thank you, Council of McGrath.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland, for bringing notice to this. And, and thank you, Mr. Given, for your explanation. I, I too understood it the way Mr. Given just explained it. And in that meeting where I moved this motion, it was explained more than once, was explained really clearly in that meeting. I think that the point being that if there is an amendment needed to a motion that's on the table, that the amendment be, be clear because it was lots of conversation. The motion was repeated three or four times and it was clearly stated. And if there was a counselor that wished to amend the motion and make it clear that wasn't clearly noted to amend any motion that was made by me in that meeting. So administration interpreted it. I moved the motion. Administration did follow up with the wording of that motion after the meeting and it was, it's written down on my paper that I gave to administration by email. So I think it was as clear as can be, but we can certainly all get better with process. And we can certainly all become a little more clear when it comes to making motions, especially on this digital format.
I have a question. I see, I thought in the discussion there was the possibility that we might include it into current operational budget. Now I see it's in the capital budget. That just delays it longer. And I thought that was, we had suggested that possibility that it be done under operations. It's not a big amount.
Definitely given. Deputy Mayor Jono, this is exactly, I think, the point that Mayor Ireland was making. The motion as put on the table was specific to refer to the 2022 budget discussions. And so that's how administration recorded it and, and what this path that we're following. If there was a desire to direct administration, consider whether the project can be done within the 2021 operational budget. There's a significant difference there and, and it doesn't appear that that's what council voted on. Certainly from what I heard, Counselor McGrath say that wasn't the intent of promotion. Although so other councilors had a desire to do that, then this is where that need for clarity on the table or amendments on motions that are specific rather than suggestions of, well, we're going to pass this motion. But could we also do something else that's different? It's very challenging for administration to interpret that.
Right now, the matter is very challenging for the chairman.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd suggest that Mayor Ireland is probably raising this just as a reminder for council going forward. And I don't know whether he had intended to ask council to reconsider or to change motion. I don't think that there's, there is not a motion on the floor. I think it's just a motivation by his worship.
Thank you for that. Council of Butler, you, edging on, raising your hand. Thank you very much.
In the last three, I think, committee meetings, we have presentation which have, in each case, been made by a motion. And I understand that we are trying hard to move forward in a way that council shouldn't move forward, which is through motions. In this presentation we received today, it's a little different because we're we have a suggested motion in front of us that was in front of us on the agenda. And we're simply referring to that motion for further action. I struggle with extensive urgency when someone comes to us with a presentation with a request. Sometimes that request is not as clear as we hope that through, through most of anyone. That has been the case, I think, in the last two presentations that came to us prior to today. And we, I feel should not feel pressured and possibly shouldn't even entertain a motion right then and there immediately as soon as the presentation is provided to it. We're not even in the business section of the agenda at that point. I think a more appropriate response when we receive presentations with a request would be to refer that to perhaps the next committee meeting for the discussion. It would give it would give administration an opportunity to consider what they might come forward with some context and and a recommendation. So I think we should be cautious about making motions on the fly in that way because we will inevitably end up where we are, which is, well, what the heck did we mean? Because we haven't had time to take a little bit, to consider context. That's all.
Thank you for that. With that, Council of Demora?
Well, I just wanted to add in the past, in, in past councils, we used to have different processes where council would set aside certain amounts of money and they can come up for requests, whether it was community development. You know, as an example, and then, you know, that process would be set in place and then we'd have a lot of time to comment like that. So I do agree with what Counselor Butler is saying. When we do, I think, you know, procedurally to, to fall into process properly and to get a better idea of scope. I think it's, it's, it's better if we follow a different practice and to go about it. Problem after that. I think that I'm at a loss for words, but I completely support with what Council of Demora is saying.
Also, Kilogram?
In the past, when the presentations were late, we often would discuss, they'd ask questions. He'd say, you know, we would bring this back to another committee of the whole in order to move forward. And then we'd say, well, we might have information from the description. And then we'd say, well, we might have information from the description or not, or whether the council just wanted to express it. Does it mean he has to make a motion? Do we make a motion by council?
Mayor, please.
I just wanted to comment that Mr. Given, I think, has accurately interpreted my intention. And it's certainly not my intention to doubt the motion. This particular motion, I use just as an example. Counselor McGrath made a motion. She took the time to have it written out. And there was extensive discussion without any change. And so we voted on the motion as the, my concern was that some councils may have thought the discussion altered the intent of the motion, but it didn't. The discussion doesn't do that. So there are ways that we can approach this moving forward. I would think that we should have an opportunity at community reports and, and vote to look at our procedure by law and give that argument with this stuff. I raised this only as an example or an issue that deals with all motions and how we conduct our own decisions. I did not raise it to suggest any, oh, but what has happened, but just to draw attention to the fact that we need to be precise when we direct administration. That is all I can do to raise the matter.
Thank you for that. But it was a motion of the committee who referred to administration. So where is the follow-up from the committee? Make sure that administration, like what step does council take to make sure that this moves on?
So good. Deputy Mayor, you know, and I'm just looking to make sure that it's there. You'll see in the motion action list that's contained in today's agenda. This item is reflected there on the second page in motion action list. It's the very last page of the council committee agenda package. And so you'll see that we're recommending that our due date or date to return, our target date would be November 2021. And that's reflective of what administration intends to present the 2022 budget discussions. So in alignment with motion that was passed, administration has captured that motion and has included in our motion action list for tracking. So council will know what the status is and administration's recommendations that will be returning along with the 2022 budget discussion, which we will present in November.
Thank you for that. All right, you brought up the issue, satisfied with the discussion and, thank you. Then we move on to new business. Item seven point one, paid parking pilot project update. Attachment in our package and she given.
Deputy Mayor, you know, fair grief, this follows the same format as the update that administration provided a couple of meetings ago. You'll see in there the updated numbers, just under 10,000 payments by tap, about 43 paid at the administration office. And in contrast, for that first week period back in July, we had just over 1,100 tap payments and nine payments at the office. So tap payment still far outpacing the payments in the person. In this report, let's see that we have now issued 154 senior passes. That's increased from 87 in the previous report. And we've issued 236 resident passes up from 166 in the previous report. In terms of enforcement action, we have, the team has issued approximately 1,200 warnings and just 12 tickets. And as again, as a reminder for council, tickets are only issued after a vehicle has previously received a warning. And using the automated system, officers are able to track vehicles where they've seen them on day and whether that has been previously given warning. So given the high number, high volume of use and the high number of warnings, council can see, I hope, that administration's taking a pretty light hand to enforcement and really only in situations where somebody has had ample opportunity to apply. And overall net revenue, you'll see there is increased to 14, just over $14,000. One note that I'd make to council, this is net revenue after expenses. And so this is revenue after the commission paid to the operator hotspot. And also after materials, goods and supplies. And so this is a true net revenue number. And so council can feel confident that the paid parking is paying its way. And then some municipal budget. Again, we'll summarize all this at the end in a, in a report, but just to give council a bit of an update on where we are. Two, well, one small item for council's attention. You may have seen or heard some questions about the lack of number of signs available for people to make their tap payments. We have experienced a challenge in that we've had a number of signs go missing. There has been some theft of signs and some vandalism, essentially destroying signs and tearing off of posts. This is a real challenge because some of those signs are specialized in that they have an RFID tag inside them, which is what we actually use to tap and pay. So the lead time on getting replacement signs is much longer than just ordering a sign. It has to be a special sign with that little tag embedded inside of it. So we identified that there were nine missing and have been able to track down three of the missing signs. Now, we do have some more on order, but it is a bit of a challenge administration to identify this as an opportunity for improvement. But also, I suppose, if possible, you know, council and the community could help us keep an eye on those signs and ensure that they're. The real challenge when a sign goes missing is frustration for our visitors. People come and they want to comply or have generally okay with paying. They can't figure out where to pay and they feel like they have to, you know, if it's a, a process that has a lot of friction, it leads to frustration. And so administration in, you know, for future years would have far more signs and we would make sure that they're tied down a lot better. But for this year, if possible, that council can help us get the word out about wanting to ensure that it's easy for visitors who, by all accounts, don't have any challenge in using the system and help us keep those signs up that would be. But that's the paid parking update for this term. And again, we will come back next month with an additional update as we head towards the close of the project after the Thanksgiving long weekend.
Thank you for that. Must be remembered that it is a year one, it's pilot traffic and there's a lot of learning to be done. So thank you very much for the fine work. Nice to see some revenue added to our budget from that. Council Demora.
Yeah, I was going to question that revenue because when we had our first report, I think we're three and a half days into it and we were trending a thousand dollars a day. So hopefully, I don't know exactly what the status now, but hopefully we'll get that information at our next meeting. I'm just wondering, with the previous experience of the company that we chose to go forward with, what type of security enhancements they have for sign removals? And if they, if they hadn't gone through this process before and, and being in the municipality of 20 years, have, do we have any enhanced security for those types of signs of the day they don't get removed going forward? Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to chuckle. I just, to me, I find it an awkward situation.
Deputy Mayor, you know, if I may, for Council Demora, yes, there are different ways to install signs. The operations team is looking at other ways, basically with, their basic level of including a washer, which will make it, you know, by your service area. So it's harder to pull just a screw off. And we can look at, you know, other types of mounting part in the future. But for now, signs that we're replacing in operations are using a little bit of a different installation method. We might talk to the operator about whether we could have those RFID tags on, on picker signs or back signs for future.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, you know, just a couple of questions that I made. Mr. Given, do you know the total number of parking stalls that are subject to paid parking?
Deputy Mayor, you know, I don't have that at hand, Mayor Ireland. That is a number that we do have, though. I just don't have it in mind.
Let me add a second question. I appreciate the information with respect to paid parking. But equally important, in my view, is usage of unpaid parking. And so is there evidence being collected about use? Information, should say, you know, it's being collected about the use of the parking lots, which continue to be free and free parking.
Deputy Mayor, you know, or Mayor Ireland, I don't have that information at hand. Administration has been looking at that. We had intended to install signs to allow people to register their parking in the unpaid lots. I'd have to confirm whether that happened or not. And even if it did, I questioned whether or not somebody will go to the effort registering their parking and not being asked to pay for it. So we questioned that. I think anecdotally, the parking lots are full. But we, I don't have a hand objective on file of that.
Understand. Just the observations dated by law or other staff that are driving the use.
We are in our peak times, so there's lots of things to be happening with, with paid parking, Council Butler.
Thank you very much. I think that our direction on this was to implement paid parking in the area of downtown, which previously had two hour parking. However, I see there are some areas downtown that still have two hour parking. And so I'm wondering if those are areas that we have just not got to yet or the areas that administration decided for one reason or another we should not move forward with in this year. What's the status of those two hour spaces? It's caused me a little confusion in terms of our direction and also a little bit in terms of what areas are actually paid or areas that's not. What I see those two hour areas, not huge areas, but some still.
Deputy Mayor, you know, no, administration didn't make any specific decisions to exclude any two hour paid areas from paid parking. There may have been a couple of little gaps where we didn't get signage installed or where there was something oversight. That would be something that we would track again before it's canceled at the end. And to be frank, Counsel Butler, there's one gap that I think I found, which, you know, I'm sure like lots of other locals. Oh, great, here's a spot close to downtown that appears not to have to pay. And so I had that same observation, but there was no intentional decision by administration to exclude areas. We had intended to include all areas that were two hour parking in the paid parking as directed by council. There may have been a couple of oversights for this.
Thank you. You. Council Demora.
I'm just, I'd like to question some of the feedback that we've been receiving from the residents. I know that a lot of that will come out in the, in the final report. But anecdotally, a lot of the discussion that I'm, I'm receiving are the ability particularly for seniors to get to grocery stores and how the paid parking has kind of pushed, you know, other parking to the limits in other areas. So I just wanted to make that observation known in case other people might have the inability to bring that forward to administration. So there's definitely a lot of challenges there and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of, out of the report. How's the, if I may, through you, Deputy Mayor, to Mr. Given, how have, how's some of the reception been going at the municipal office? Would be welcome to address tickets and warnings.
Deputy Mayor, you know, Council Demora, I don't have direct experience with that. I don't know if Ms. Malinchuk is set up on our Zoom today. She and her team have had the most direct experience with that and I certainly won't speak to it. Ms. Malinchuk is there. Looks like she is in attendees list. And I know that she's listening. So Ms. Malinchuk, maybe we can elevate you to a panelist and you can share a little bit about what your team is seeing when customers do come in. Again, recognizing that it's quite a limited amount of customers that are actually coming in and paying at the office, but I know that the team has been very busy with the seniors requests, which are a little bit more detailed in terms of getting seniors set up with their senior pass. Malinchuk?
Um, yes. May I hear that question again, please? It was a bit muffled.
I apologize. I was trying to project to the owl. We have a little owl here, which is observing our council meeting and recording. My question was, I guess, how has the reception been at the municipal office with dealing with paying for passes, receiving and tickets and warnings?
Thank you. So administration has been very busy, mostly with locals in setting those up that don't have smartphones, for example. And when it comes down to tickets, we have not had many issuance as of yet. I believe bylaw is doing a lot of education and warnings at this point and we haven't had a lot of tickets issued. So we haven't had many come in. There are, you know, some issues that we have to explain things to people. And, and, you know, we have the occasional person that is a little bit harder to deal with. But all in all, things have been going well and it is busy, busier than before. But it definitely comes from the resident side, not so much the visitor side. We are not seeing tons of people coming in and paying for their half day or full day. As you can see with the statistics provided, most people are scanning. And then there are the occasional people that are coming in to pay. So yes, it's busy, but resident side mostly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll speak personally. I've been in the office a couple of times, signed checks and I've overheard some conversations regarding this exact inquiry. And I thought our personnel, our staff did a very, very good job at the very front and very efficiently done. Looks like the matter was resolved very, very quickly and very satisfactorily. So congratulations to the staff. Again, work in progress, but we are progressing well. Council Demora.
I too observed and experienced and I, and I did want to commend, you know, administration, particularly the people at the municipal office and how they handled some stressful or a stressful situation and very professional and I was quite proud of our staff. So I just wanted to for that, thank Mr. Given and Ms. Malinchuk and their staff for addressing issues in a very professional way.
Thank you for that. That is a good note to end this discussion on. And we will move on to item seven point two, natural gas procurement. Again, happened in our package. And the presentation is.
I'll just provide a brief introduction. Ms. Malinchuk has the details on this. Council administration is coming forward with a recommendation that would allow us to move forward with issuing a request for proposals for natural gas. As you can imagine, the municipality, like any other household or business, needs to purchase utilities, including electricity, natural gas. We do that under contracts and have used a process through Energy Associates International as our consultants to manage the municipality's interests in these cases. And you'll see in the recommendation that administration is asking for committee to recommend council approve the purchase of natural gas under partial edge fixed price contract for term of up to four years. With that approval, administration would move forward with issuing the public procurement and receiving live bids where natural gas providers would bid their price or various terms that administration would evaluate those bids and accepting the one that provides the best value for the municipality along with the most certainly. So administration will be looking to balance certainty and price. You know, essentially it was a live bid auction. But of course, we need that pre-approval as structured here from council to enable us to go forward and do that because that live bid process doesn't enable us to come back and check the prices with council because the utilities market, as you can imagine, changes seconds, literally second to second. And so we need this format of approval, which I believe is consistent with what Ms. Malinchuk said. Ms. Malinchuk may have additional detail or she'll be there to be able to answer any questions that council might have.
Um, I don't have any additional detail. I'm here if there are any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments, councilors? Council de mons.
Deputy Mayor General, this is the same company that we've used in the past as a consultant. So just to remind council that they are not energy providers. They are simply consultants that are supporting administration with the specialized expertise of energy markets, which is not an in-house expertise that we have. And so they are supporting us through this process and helping to structure the.
Thanks very much, Mr. Given. I guess my question is around the recommendation and just what is being asked. And I admit, I haven't read the policy in detail. I suppose what I don't understand is whether a motion from council is really needed here. Council doesn't approve pricing specifically on all purchases on all commodities. And I'm not going to pretend that after reading this report, that I understand really what a partial hedge fixed price contract is. So when I vote in favor of moving forward, I will vote in favor of moving forward for no reason other than I trust administration to make the right decision. So to me, the motion is really to support administration in making the right decision. Does something like this really need to come to council? Or resolution? Or is it really in the end more information? Because I wouldn't dream of going against the recommendation in any way.
Deputy Mayor General, fair question. Again, you know, this scenario where administration pulls in outside expertise to help us through the markets. And so it is highly technical. But I think that there is a legitimate reason for bringing it to council, even though it is a highly technical matter. This does commit the municipality to substantial purchases over a long period of time. And so, you know, we're, and Ms. Malinchuk may have the number that I am just losing off the top of my head in terms of how much our annual cost of natural gas is. And Natasha, if you have that, maybe you can show that to council. But it is, it is a material amount that we spend on natural gas. And so it would be a bit odd for administration just to choose to do that. That said, I appreciate the point that, you know, council is not really in a position to say, well, we do or don't like this approach. We do or don't like that amount because of the technical nature and the fast-moving nature of procurement. So sort of council brothers, I think I agree. But at this time, administration wants to err on the side of ensuring that council is informed rather than just taking decisions that after the fact, council might say, well, why weren't we informed about the fact we were going to a new electricity contractor, new, excuse me, new natural gas contract? And we would rather the council is informed about that so that if you ever face with any questions, that you at least know that the process has happened and that there was a legitimate public process that was followed, that you can be part of.
Thanks. So I take that point. Let me come at it from a slightly different point of view. So the organization we're working with is recommending a 50% hedge fixed price in 2022. But that we evaluate all other, other possible contract terms for the remaining years. So we would be approving a partial hedge position for the next year. But an unknown going forward for the following three years. In the end, wouldn't it be better to ask us to approve administration working with the organization, what is the name, EAI? And proceed as advised. Would you come back a year from now, if a year from now, if we take a 50% hedge position for the next year? And then the recommendation changes, recommendation changes, would you need to come back? Or are we giving you the goal ahead, which is what I would like to do, to make the best decision, working with the experts over the next four years? And not have to come back each and every time to a council that won't really be able to comment on the recommendation made by that company.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor General, just to be clear, the recommendation from administration here containing the report would enable us to seek a term of up to four years. And so we wouldn't be coming back over the course of those four years with additional recommendations, council. It would be, so administration will evaluate the bits essentially and see what the best value is, considering both price and length of term, in the same way that you may do in your own home energy. You'd say, well, do I want to have a one-year plan or a three-year plan? No, the one-year plan seems a bit cheaper, but I'd rather have the security of knowing what my price is for three years. So the recommendation here is structured so that administration can make that evaluation. One thing that might be an addition to this would be council could ultimately direct administration to procure energy for up to a certain period of time for your turn and provide a report back to council with results. You know, that type of thing, at least would maybe pose a loop a little bit more. That said, when we procure energy, those assumptions are baked into the budget, which council sees on an annual basis anyhow. So, you know, it sort of is. It is flexible depending on the level of information council wants us. If you want to pull report back on the details of what our energy procurement results were and, and what the options available were and what administration decided, that's something that's possible. I don't know how much, you know, might be interesting to council, but it wouldn't really enable you to make any additional decision because we do have, you know, again, that fast-moving nature. We essentially need to get the council to go forward, cure the energy. We could pose a loophole a bit more and report it back with the results.
Thank you. Council de mons. Yeah, I think, thank you very much through you, sir, to Mr. Given. We have an RFP out right now, up until September 1st. So after that, we'll, we'll be analyzing. And then is there another deadline after that when we have to go, we have to make a decision on?
Deputy Mayor General, so this would be the decision. And so we would not be coming back to council because again, the, the rates that people would submit would only be valid for a small window of time that would not enable us to come back to committee and then to council to approve that decision. And that's why it's, that's why it's here in this format. So we essentially will receive the results of the RFP, we will evaluate them and we will assign, you know, the window with, you know, prices are good for, it certainly isn't 30 days in the energy markets. It's more in the, in terms of hours. And so administration would be making those determinations quite quickly and securing energy. And again, that's where we could respond, report back to council the results. But we wouldn't be positioned to allow council to approve the purchase of the margins just on the.
I just wanted to finish that comment. So sorry, being at the first meeting that EAI presented to us, they had a pretty efficient presentation and very knowledgeable and very easy to understand. And I'm just wondering for council's sake and some of the viewers, if we can get them to present to us and give us a brief update on the process, on how this is achieved and what the 50% hedging might look like or what that means for clarification and the types of savings the municipality can achieve or see going forward. As I understand that it's been very helpful, you know, on our bottom line throughout the years. And I think having that a little bit more, the information a little bit more clear for us will help us to move forward. And I'm for, for supporting this, but I'd like to have a little bit of a refresher and update.
Deputy Mayor General, they absolutely are available and would be happy to present to council. Again, I suggested in terms of the timelines, that would be something that would, who, in order to meet the timelines of this RFP, that would be something we would do in terms of reporting back to council of how the current went. And I know that EIA would be happy to be here to give, and give council more details on what the procurement looked like, what the results were and what the results actually mean, which would, I think, probably follow us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor General, through you, Mr. Given. I appreciate the motivation to come to council with this. I think we shared council about you that you're recommending that. Likely approve that given that we don't really understand it. But what I, and what I will say is that we've been well-served by EAI in the past. And so I have a level of confidence, but I'm still trying to connect some dots and try to figure out whether you are presenting this other than a balance of caution or whether policy B009, both policy and administrative procedures require you to do this. So in the request for decision, there's a reference to that policy. So I looked it up and the policy is short, it's a couple of paragraphs, but it's all on one page. But it proposes that procurement of goods and services is in the hands, still says a municipal manager, so that should be updated. But it's in your hands, but subject to the administrative procedures. Administrative procedures are eight pages of pretty dense writing. And I am trying to figure out whether you are here by me and perhaps you or Mrs. Malinchuk can tell me if there is any section of the administrative procedures that can compel you to be here. One of the things that council has indicated is that in the review of policies, fiscal control policies are among the first to be done. And I'm not sure whether our policy and the administrative procedures here compel you to be here, whether it's just a stupid view to be here, because council should have known. I cannot make sense of where this might land, if at all, in the administrative procedures.
Yes, Deputy Mayor General, it is there in the administrative procedures. Hopefully, it actually specifies natural gas and electricity under 3.3 in the procedures where it says, defines who is responsible and who has approval. And so you can see that council ultimately has approving authority for natural gas and electricity procurement on a as-required frequency. So what we're recommending to you here is the, you know, the term that we're, we're asking for a term that would be flexible. And we're asking for your approval to enter into that, that live bid process. As noted, this is something that is a part of the review process and the financial controls. Administration is well aware of that. The eight pages of complexity that are contained in those administrative procedures. And then fairly some of those administrative procedures may end up in a council policy where you're more directly in control of them. But for now, natural gas is specifically identified as something that council has approval for. But because of the way the energy markets move, we are asking essentially for free approval rather than a, than a approval of the specific numbers because it's not what they risked it would be.
Thank you. Thank you. Notice that the reference that was staring me in the face and I just re-readministered requirements. Thank you for drawing my attention to that section.
Thank you for that information. I was pleased to see the report because, but I thought that it was strictly within administration to do this without a to clarify. But I'm sure that administration is looking for as much feedback as possible. Because pricing natural gas is higher than it's been a long, long time. And this is a very difficult time to be securing or procuring a long-term contract. So I appreciated the opportunity to be involved in the, in the discussion and perhaps to feed back for administration.
Thanks to that, Deputy Mayor. So we would be looking to that motion again, just appreciate the challenge that is for council. But the committee recommend council approve the purchase of natural gas under partial hedge fixed price contract per term of four years.
Sure. I'll move that committee recommend council approve the purchase of natural gas under a partial hedge fixed price contract for a term of four years. And just to speak to the motion, I'll just say that the questions I asked, which are really the same questions Mayor Ireland is asking from a different point of view, were not in any way meant to suggest any lack of content. More the opposite, I want to be sure that we are providing the flexibility. Administration units to make the right decisions. It's a good conversation because it, it's about how we draw the line between policy and innovation, where that line sits. And that's really important in having us as questions completely satisfied before it's been brought to this other way. Is the one that is used. So I have to make that motion and thanks for the interesting question. Or discussion on the motion, Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor, just a question clarity, given the discussion we had about motion before, I want to confirm, Council de mons, that you, your motion was per term of up to four years.
Oh, did I not say that? Thank you.
I might have heard it differently. I just wanted to make sure.
I intended to read the motion exactly, in case there was any.
So the motion is written in the agenda package under 7.2, which was moved by council by. We all hear the motion. Any more discussions? We're ready to vote? Show hands. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item is seven.
Just before we leave that.
Yes.
Just for absolute clarity, and it is important to get the motion right here. But again, this is a recommendation. So this will come back. Come back, council will. So if there is a mishear of a word, it can always be fixed. The next stage, not too easy.
Thank you. Next item, 7.3, social norms around vaccination. This verbal report, Mr. Given.
Well, Deputy Mayor, as you know, this is a verbal, I won't suggest that it's a report. This comes as a result of the conversation at the most recent council meeting, where there was some discussion about whether or not the municipality should take some action to encourage or establish social norms around people getting their COVID vaccine. And so this really is here as a result of council wanting to discuss this. Administration doesn't have anything to present on the topic. I will say that the most recent vaccination statistics from Alberta Health Services, which I believe I circulated to council last week, demonstrate that Jasper has, I think, a relatively high vaccination rate. And particularly in some younger age groups that were lagging previously. Administration has supported the vaccination bus that came to the community. And I believe that we saw a pretty good bump in the rates of younger people who previously weren't vaccinated, taking advantage of. So I don't know what council wishes with this, but there was a request to have this added to the next committee agenda. And this is the next meeting. So it's here for council discussion.
Questions, comments, Mr. Given? Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor General, through Mr. Given. Yet perhaps a bit of discommunication. So I was the one that mentioned the social norms were possibly associated with social. Whether or not that was something that administration, particularly through CFS, was considered. I'm perfectly happy that it is here. I think it's an important discussion and it's important to council and the organization to be clear about our expectations throughout vaccination. But I am wondering, in terms of building social norms, whether council or administration is interested in delving into the issue of, for example, our own staff and our own facilities. So we see across the country, other communities making vaccinations, for example, mandatory for staff or at least mandatory with some exceptions. And would the organization set standards that would make it easier for businesses in the community? If we were to, if a farmer's daughter says that if they're going to visit municipal facilities, we're required to show people vaccination. I just throw those questions out. I just throw those questions out for council. Whether we want to be able to engage in the discussion, no. But in terms of setting expectations for the rest of the community, we could take it upon ourselves to consider that. What we think is best for the health of the staff in particular, because that has to be priority, although it's not necessarily council's priority. That may be the priority of administration. For the organization of the council, but also in terms of providing help for our residents and businesses. Welcome that discussion. That was my intent of raising.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given.
But Deputy Mayor, as you know, uh, council, uh, I can report to council that back in uh, June, we did a, a small survey of municipal staff, um, which received, was not mandatory, was so received, you know, a decent response. We had about twenty six people respond to the survey. I'm just asking about their views around vaccination, whether they have been vaccinated. Again, this is back in uh, June, towards the end of June. At that time, seventy three percent of the respondents felt that they're very informed about uh, about the vaccine development and distribution. Eighty eight percent uh, reported at the time, and again, it's only twenty three people, but at the time, eighty percent reported that they had received both doses of their vaccine. Um, another nearly eight percent said that they received their first dose and plan to receive the second dose as soon as possible. And so again, it's a month ago. Um, and there was a very limited number of people who demonstrated any hesitancy towards vaccine, vaccination within our municipal staff. So that was good to see. And when we received those responses, we really just kind of said, our, our team is, is on it. Uh, and in addition to the voluntary rapid testing, which I believe council has been informed about, uh, municipal staff participating um, in rapid testing to ensure that if they're in case of COVID, it come light, we capture it quickly. I believe internally, uh, our staff are generally adopting vaccination as soon as it's available to them. These results have shown entire numbers that we did it. But we have a very low number of uh, staff who have any hesitancy towards vaccination. And that outside of vaccination, we are working to control uh, any risk of COVID spread through our rapid testing regime, which again is voluntary and we have a fairly high level of staff participation. So for our internal municipal staff, I'm quite confident and actually very happy, gratified to see the way that our staff are responding to care for themselves and others. There has been a question that's come to administration of whether or not municipal administration is planning on limiting access to municipal facilities based on vaccination status. Um, and I'll say that this inquiry was coming from a supportive perspective, uh, saying that they would be supportive if the municipality wanted to, but it was only one inquiry. Um, and my response back uh, is that administration is not considering that at this time. If council wished to direct us to consider uh, that, we would obviously provide you the information that you needed to, to, to think about that question. Um, and an essential part of that discussion would be about equity, privacy and and how you can sort of balance those things if we have taxpayers who are paying for facilities through their taxes um, and they wish to maintain their privacy, how would you balance those types of issues? But I don't want to make that into a larger point than this because we have, at this stage, we only have one inquiry from one representative of one team. This has not been something that administration is hearing significant uh, questions about in the community. Even though there have been some other examples of municipalities that have moved down a path of making uh, more things mandatory, both for internal staff, which I don't believe we need to do based on the results of, you know, the voluntary participation received. And I think that there was probably, there will probably be a significant amount of case law that will develop from municipalities that choose to limit access to facilities based on vaccination status. And so that's why administrations would not proceed down that path unless directed to do so by council.
So, in cubes, well, anything of a mandatory nature would not be perceived by administration unless directed by council. Now, there are events and happening around us very currently around what wave or whatever it is, and I think there's also the upcoming season of facilities usage, like the arena and so on and so forth. So I think we have to be prepared to be very open minded and take into discussion. Any, any comments from, because I feel we have to make some contribution comments. Thank you. Council, but.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a, it's a really difficult question. Um, we started talking, and I'm going to address this, the question of social norms and encouraging social norms. We think at the community level do have a responsibility sometimes to encourage and to demonstrate the social norm we hope to see in the community and to encourage. And an example of where we did this thirteen months ago, I think it was, prior to losing into the nasty mandate bylaw. But when we thought and hoped optimistically that we could avoid having to pass a bylaw and encourage, we didn't use, I don't think, the language of social norms, but to encourage the social norm, to make wearing masks a social norm. And we readily and quickly did that. So I think we should now show leadership as council and as an organization to encourage the public to vaccinate. I don't think it has to be as complete and complex a rollout as we did with masks. It could be relatively simple, it can be social, social media, online ad campaign. I don't think it's the kind of thing that posting signage around kind of example, we be part of it. But I think we should, I think we should take that leadership and show that leadership. So on the social norms side, that's what I would tend, subject to what I hear from other councils. I'm in question of mandating for public attendance at facilities. That is a really tough one. I think from a personal standpoint, strictly. I would feel very much that that would be a good thing to do, but my personal opinion of that matters so little, I'm just kidding. It really is a question of what would the community or what the community would be doing in point of action. It's a tough one. I, I can't come up with much other than, golly, that's a tough one. But I think we should watch closely what is developing. I don't know what we're going to see happen at provincial level and we've always taken the view that we should look to the problems for our leadership. The province goes in the direction that the province we see is going, and we may feel that we should take a cue from that and make some moves. But one of my fears would be if we actually mandated essentially what would amount to a vaccine passport for public attendance. I am very concerned with what we're kind of the position that we put staff in. We have, for example, a fairly sizable gathering of the activities over the weekend and I found myself thinking, wow, what would that look like if we say? Well, you can't kind of interfere on vaccine. Do we have anything of the world at all to deal with that, even if we thought of that as sort of in principle, that that's what we need to do. So I feel very cautious on that. And would suggest that at this stage, we just sort of watch what's happening on the broader stage. But let's move forward with other social norms campaign to encourage vaccination. I know we have achieved better vaccinations in town among the younger population, but I'm also cognizant, knowing what we'll do about how things roll in the hospitality world. That we're going to see a considerable changeover of staffing on the front lines as we move from the summer season into the fall. So keeping that awareness and pressure, particularly for young people and music people coming in town that are by nature, they're working lifestyle being close borders, we know that's where outbreaks happen. So let's put together something.
Sorry for going. Thank you, Council, but I appreciate your, your comments, especially on key points of events that occur in our community. We may tend to overlook because it's not turned over at the young level, but I would be welcome. Recommendation or comments, most of probably empty.
I also like the idea of the campaign. I know that the women bank urging everybody to get vaccinated. That would be great. I thought I needed for the masking. It was awesome. I'm wondering if we could work it over the health for us. There is such a changeover um, come summer to winter, that we can get a mobile clinic to come out again and come fall. So that when we have all the new workers coming in to work at Seaho, that it's really available. I think that would be great to do. I kind of limit to them again, because I want the last clinic again. I know some online watchers have dropped them down, but I do have vaccinated, come back to work and I just felt it was great.
Again, proactive approach. Mr. Given. Anybody else? Thank you. It is eleven eleven this time. Let's take a break. Eleven twenty, nine minutes? Okay, thank you, Mayor. So we're, we convene at eleven twenty. We will move to item number seven point four, which is in the edition. Are we there already?
Well, they finished the last one.
I'm sorry. Council, I think.
Oh, um, sorry, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but I believe some councillors feel we haven't finished with item seven point three.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. I was unclear on that one. Mayor Ireland.
Uh, based on that previous discussion on agenda in seven point three, I would like to make a motion. That motion being that committee of the whole, direct administration to develop and implement a limited social norms campaign to encourage vaccinations, particularly among the least well performing community demographic, is based on Alberta Health Services statistics. I might speak to that and I'm, I'm open to other wording changes to make it both limited and targeted. So I am not looking for administration to come up with a really complex campaign, but limited and targeted to the demographic that according to my understanding of the health services statistics, is performing least well in our community and is like on, like rights, the most exposed in terms of the bump and so exposed itself, but exposing the fact. So I'm looking at something that is targeted and limited so, so as not to overburden administration and is necessary, but it is, I think, our duty as the elected council, and it is our desire as the elected council to put community health as a first priority. This is targeted, very community health issue. Take a position. Get the message out, but in some fashion that has the realist chance of encouraging vaccinations among those who so as I say, a written motion, I've tried to read it well, but it was a bit of a rush job. Um, so the wording may not be exact, and so I'm open to any sort of friendly amendments or other amendments that the motions. That committee of the whole, direct administration to develop and implement a limited social norms campaign to encourage vaccinations, particularly among the least well performing community demographic, as based on Alberta Health Services statistics.
Thank you. Do you want to speak more of this then? No, no, thank you.
No, I think it's, it's very worthwhile going forward with this motion. Um, you know, when we have spikes in cases in, in the community, it's very disruptive to families. It causes a lot of stress in the community and it disrupts business as well. And uh, you know, our overall mandate is community health and I really appreciate the mayor's.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Ireland, for the motion. I think the wording works well. I believe administration understands our intent. This has to be fit into existing workflow. However, there's really no work we're doing right now in communications thing, which exceeds this importance. So I believe a satisfactory campaign can be developed with existing resources. We'll be happy with it.
Thank you, Councilman Calabrese.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I also support this. I think this is very important for community health. Thank you, administration and events for helping us with this. And I think once the campaign is off and running, then it's up to us as individual transfers to get that out of our social media platforms and encourage everybody to participate, just not for their own health, for, for, for all our community. Nor any seniors that are vulnerable. And the fact that we're all vaccinated, that doesn't mean to say we still can't get COVID because we can. And that's something that we have to realize and encourage everybody for all of us here in this community to do with each other.
Thank you, Councilman Calabrese. Any more discussion? Very positive, very supportive. Ready for the question? I'll show hands, all in. Thank you. Carefully announcing. Now, we move to in seven point four, municipal staff housing. Council, the more you made the addition, go ahead with the presentation.
Yes, um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The reason I'm bringing this forward is to have a discussion at a future committee of the whole on whether we want to make a recommendation to administration or ask administration for information. I know that everyone's tapped particularly for getting to the end of this term and there's a bunch of things to tie up. And, and one of the reasons I am bringing this up is, um, two years ago, almost on this very day, uh, we had an ad hoc committee meeting regarding strategic planning and noting that our term would soon be ending and there were a bunch of mandates that we wanted to complete. And several of them, we were able to get going. Um, you know, the pandemic got in the way of a few of them. Uh, one of them was, uh, you know, attaining more staff housing for uh, the municipality. And part of that was, um, you know, we were having some difficulty in the past and we might have some difficulty in the future in attracting and retaining staff in particular. Uh, you know, upper management and directors. We have some people that are retiring and, uh, you know, and perhaps maybe the labor pool to draw from in the community may, may not be as, uh, you know, attractive um, to what the municipality requires or, uh, you know, having uh, the ability to attract people with the skillset to, to manage uh, certain departments uh, is difficult at times and we, we've seen that recently with, with our last three hires. So, um, you know, I've noticed that there's some opportunities in the community still with some newer housing that might be a little bit more that might give us an opportunity uh, right now. And I'm just wondering if there's an appetite by council down the road to, to have that discussion on whether Down the road to to have that discussion on whether it's worthwhile pursuing, taking a little bit more inventory when it comes to staff house.
Thank you. Staff housing always a challenge, certainly in the summertime and the municipality is no different. And I think that our C E O must have given this this experience that. So he probably has some comments and reports as to how the administration has done this summer. Steven.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor. You know, certainly administration is aware of the need to discuss that housing. We have seen that as a challenge in recruitment, that is a question that I think we are asked about when we're recruiting somebody from outside the community. And so we welcome that discussion about how we might further our staff housing. I think it may out as a question probably also involves J C H C. And whether we can make better better utilize our existing staff housing, if there's any way we can leverage that. But administration be open to that discussion because it is an ongoing challenge. We were probably that experienced myself.
Thank you.
My intent wasn't to put anybody on the spot for information today or for many motions. I just, you know, give a heads up that I'd like it to come forward at another. Meeting for conversation. I'm not, I don't like surprising people or council on the day of. So just just a forewarning, instead of an email going out saying I want to talk about this, I thought I. Discussion and giving us time to contemplate. You know, I think before we before the pandemic hit, we administration was working on. Whether it could be affordable within the current budget to discuss whether, you know, leveraging some activity. Or if our rental income could help us attain more housing within the framework of where we're currently sitting. So that's something that I would still have to look at reviewing. Thank you.
Also, Butler.
Thanks for bringing it up and for suggesting the purpose and means to. Bring it forward at a future meeting. I'll just say that for me. The question of. Staff housing for the municipality is a policy question and I will refer back to budget discussions earlier this year. Where we directed. We did not provide some money for municipal housing that was requested. Reason, at least my reason at the time, was that we have no policy framework at all, as far as I can understand. Around provision of employee housing. And I think that's a really good problem. And so I don't think that, I I think you lack of policy is a problem that we have. To have a conversation framed around acquiring more housing without having first policy, without discussion about. How it would be administered to, for, whom it would be provided. At what kind of cost recovery, for how long, all of these considerations. Would draw me into a conversation that I just don't think we're ready to have. I know that up until now, a provision of staff housing for employees has been handled, honestly, quite on an ad hoc basis. It comes down always first to, well, do we happen to have something available? And if we do, maybe the next hire should go. But then we don't have one and then the next hire is in a different situation. And I don't feel that what we're doing now. Even approaches sort equity among employees and equity for the community of ours. So for me, it has to be first and foremost, a policy decision. Even if it's aspirational approach, says where do we think we need to go and how should it be administered? Under what circumstances will we or will we not provide employee housing? And then I think that can drive us and direct us toward consideration of whether we should be acquiring more.
Thank you for that, Councilor Demora.
Well, I I think that's a very important point and I think I'm not trying to to expedite anything. We've been talking about this for the whole term now and. Again, there are certain things that got in the way and I would just, I'd feel or miss. If we miss an opportunity while we have reasonable price tags to look at as far as accumulating some surplus there. When it comes to to housing inventories. If the first step needs to be reviewing or developing a policy around municipal housing, then I think that it would be. Within council, whether it's this council or next council's best interest to do so before if the ability to attain. Housing at a reasonable price just becomes something that that's unattainable.
Councilor. McBride.
Thank you very. Very much, Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much, Councilor Demora for this. Once again, I know that you have lots of passion behind this subject and and you have worked hard to bring this subject forward and and. Keep trying to to press it forward. So thank you for that effort and. I I definitely align with Councilor Butler with this being a policy discussion and I do want to see a policy with. Municipal housing come forward before council. I agree with the the statements made by Councilor Butler and. In what he would hope to see in that policy. And also this year, we did sink substantial capital dollars into the maintenance of a municipal staff house, probably in the sum of around. Two hundred and fifty or or maybe even a little greater thousand dollars into one of the, I believe, homes that we do own as a municipality. I I would also really love to have maybe a workshop style conversation around municipal housing. And what that looks like, because we also rent housing in the community and maybe taking a closer look at what we rent. And what we pay for rental and how many rooms are being utilized in said rental. So that we can have just a more in-depth discussion and full awareness of what is currently happening with municipal housing. And what future opportunities might be for perhaps acquiring more or or staying with the current. Housing that we do have if it is sufficient enough, but I I think we need to learn more. And I certainly don't know enough about our municipal housing situation, so I'm interested in gaining more knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. The way I see it is. It's, you know, we've not used the word seasonal, but it is a seasonal housing. We need not, no investment can be made in seasonal housing. There's there's no way. So that's the difficulty that we have. You're not going to get a developer provide a seasonal housing, but that's the crime. It's a four to six month meeting. And that's where the difficulty is. We, we don't mention it in our housing policy, but because it's not attainable, but somehow there should be some thought given to that. That is my. Councilor Demora.
Yeah, and you know what? I I didn't want to take up too much council time on this today, but I do appreciate everyone's time. I think the main reason I brought this up is because I I saw the opportunities still available. And I know that there was some discussion prior to like, how would the municipality look if we were jumping on new available units that came? And seeing is that there have been newer available units on the market continually. We still have that opportunity and as we've already embarked on getting utilities going across Kanat Drive. Or, you know, potential housing going across the street to address, you know, the community need for seasonal housing. I think that, you know, having something in concert with those steps would be would be prudent.
Thank you. And with that. The polls, I think you very much for bringing that up, Councilor Demora. Next item is seven point five in addition to the agenda. Mr. Given, more in state.
Sure, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor. You know, I believe Ms. Riddell is also online and she has the details in the report, but very briefly. The federal parliament has passed legislation to acknowledge September thirtieth as the national day for truth and reconciliation. And I believe Ms. Riddell and the. State best team have started to receive some inquiries from public about whether or not the municipality is doing anything in recognition of that day. And so we thought it was prudent to bring forward a recommendation council for your consideration to actually. Formally recognize September thirtieth and direct administration to do some work to organize. Something to acknowledge our indigenous partners and move along after. I'll leave it to Ms. Riddell that she wishes to write any more context to the report. I know that it was only provided to council last night. So I probably have had a chance to read it all. If you do have any questions, Ms. Riddell is here to be able to answer.
Go ahead, Mrs. Riddell.
Thanks, Mr. Given, to Deputy Mayor, you know, and all of council. No, Mr. Given really summarized the report you see in front of you. It's two recommendations. That committee recommend council formally acknowledge September thirtieth, the national day for truth and reconciliation. Then the municipality of Jasper and that committee recommend council direct administration to work with community and indigenous partners to plan. A way to honor and recognize the day. And there's some strategic relevance listed there at the bottom of the report. And I did pull one piece called to action seventy nine from the truth and reconciliation commission report that's relevant to this. Many Jasprites already recognize September thirtieth as orange shirt day and so we just thought that this was a. Timely to bring this to committee for consideration right now. To see whether the municipality, whether council, you know, by officially recognizing the holiday. Would like to at this time take a step in sort of its ongoing work towards reconciliation. I'm available for any questions.
Do any questions for Ms. Riddell, Councilor McBride.
Thank you very for bringing this forward and thank you to admin for recognizing this in such a timely manner. Yesterday, I had a three hour workshop on the municipal role in reconciliation and and by bringing this forward with the the. The call to hatch is is exactly one of the way that we as a municipality can bring forward reconciliation and and move forward. Fast healing and fostering better relationships. So this recommendation, as it's presented, is is exactly that. And it's what we need to do forward and I'm really happy to see this here today. And it is necessary at this point in time. I don't want to jump again for any other counselors wishing to make comments, but I'm happy to move. This motion forward when the time is right. Thank you.
Thank you. As I understand it, this is already a holiday in Canada.
So Deputy Mayor, you know, my understanding is that federal parliament passed an act which would make it a statutory holiday for. Employees of the federal government or federally regulated industries. Maybe that's federally regulated issues a little bit specific, but certainly for federal employees. Would not necessarily apply to municipal employees or employees generally under provincial. And to be clear, administration here is only recommending recognition of the day and and some activities. We're not suggesting that council has the authority to make this a public holiday.
We are planning some activities.
Well, you're suggesting to council that you may want to direct us to plan some activities.
Please hear that. So any more discussion, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, you know. To you, to Ms. Riddell. Would it make any substantive difference to change the recommendation? To a proclamation rather than an acknowledgement. I appreciate that acknowledgements are. Are fairly critical in the indigenous world, but I wonder whether. This might be something fit for proclamation of council to proclaim. September thirtieth to be the national day for truth and reconciliation of Jasper rather than. Acknowledging that somebody else has done.
Ms. Riddell, you have me. So.
Thank you.
Suggesting a proclamation, correct? Yes.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor, you know, through to Mayor Ireland. That certainly could be an amendment to the recommendation. I I think either one would work and. Sort of stays within the spirit of the recommendation, certainly.
Okay, I I take it that the wording that you chose. Was not to exclude the possibility of proclamation. I I just happen to find proclamation seems stronger to me. But I I don't know whether it was just avoided intentionally or by by oversight.
Oh, the the wording was not avoided intentionally. So. Yeah, appreciate the idea. Thank you.
Thank you, if I can speak to it. First, when I first read it, I just thought it appropriate that a proclamation would be something that we could do. So. Thank you for bringing that up. Any more discussion? We do have a recommendation. From the committee, can somebody make motion? Councilor McBride.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, you know, I'd like to move that committee recommend that council formally. Proclaim September thirtieth as the national day for truth and reconciliation in the municipality. Quality of Jasper, committee recommend council. So direct administration work with community and indigenous partners to prepare and plan. To, sorry, to prepare a plan to honor and recognize the day.
Thank you. All in spend motion, discussions, debate. Very good question, on paper. And that's unanimous support for that. So thank you. Thank you for this, bringing that up to meeting today. Next item is correspondence, which we have in our. In our agenda, the quarterly report from Royal Canadian Mom and Police. Sergeant Badezy, who is not available to answer any questions to this today. So comments, questions.
Deputy Mayor, you know, if I can, just from an administrative perspective, provide a little context about why this is here. I appreciate that council may have received reports from Sergeant Badezy in the past, from the R C M P detachment. But the R C M P through K division has established a more regularized template for reporting. And it is administration's intention that these types of reports can come on a regular basis, likely quarterly. So council can see some of the statistics in the community, see some of the trends and have an opportunity to have a discussion about community safety. Over the last number of years, many local governments have been involved in. Ensuring that our C M P operations, that they're more ongoing discussion with municipal leaders, particularly relevant since. All the new municipalities start to have to pay something that awards police. I think a lot of municipalities that didn't formally pay said, well, if we're going to be paying, we'd like to know more about what's going on and have some more influence. And so in order to support that discussion here in Jasper. The new director of protective legislative services, Mr. Don, has been in contact with Mr. Daisy and asked him to. Begin to prepare these reports for council. They really are just an information item. But hopefully will stimulate some additional discussion or at least some knowledge among council about what the trends are in the community. So that when the R C M P engages the community and municipality in their annual priority setting exercise, that you'll have some sense of of what has been happening. You'll, and so our questions for council, they really are. Does quarterly seem about the right pace of getting this kind of information? Would you like to see it more or less frequently? Is the format of the information appropriate? And just remembering that the. The statistics are largely provided by a template presented by K division. So Mr. Daisy probably just has to call headquarters again and say, I need my report and they spit it out for him. But if there are areas that you're more or less interested in, I'm sure that we could ask them to focus on that. And I wouldn't expect that it would regularly be as detailed, but appreciate his efforts to highlight the community priorities. And first quarter action on those community priorities as part of the report. So really just an information item. In the future, when Mr. Don is here or Sergeant Badezy, you may be able to ask questions. Obviously, I'm not in that position right now, be able to answer specific questions about. A a trend in particular. And I also know that Mr. Badezy included some slides with respect to body warm camera. And I also know that Mr. Bedacy included some slides with respect to body worn cameras. If you're seen here considering, I would imagine that is something that's being considered across all of K Division. And he's probably providing that as a bit of a heads up to council so that you can use it. But again, the intent here is to ensure that council has access to this information on a regular basis so that you're informed, so that you can answer questions over the.
Questions, comments? Council McGrath?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Jurno. No, I'd just like to call appreciative I am for seeing this report and having this report at our table. As the works currently being done by our new director, Ms. Nadon, that will, I believe, bring more cohesion and unity with the the local RCMP detachment. And I'm really happy to see this before, for example, I'm appreciative to know of the priorities that our local detachment has. I wasn't even really aware that there was graffiti in our community. So seeing that as the second priority of our local detachment is is information for me that that I certainly appreciate. If necessary for administration, I can move that we receive reports for information if that's needed.
Deputy Mayor, you know, that would be great to just, I think, build an acknowledgement that council received the information, saw it, acknowledged it, and in the future, if there was any business arising from the information, it should also be appropriate. But I think for today, if there's no business arising out of this information, it's been provided from a call with the motion saying committee received information with those issue.
May I have such a motion? Okay. Thank you. Clear? No motion? Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Jurno. I'm clear on the motion. I just wanted to speak to the motion and extend my thanks as well. And it's it's critical, I think, not just that council receives this information, but the community does. So it's important that this information be part of the public agenda available to all of our public. I want to comment that I find the statistical information to be really well presented. Particularly starting with the trend line, although it looks at first like hieroglyphics that nobody will understand. In fact, those little graphs of the trends are critical, but equally critical are the raw numbers. So that although something might go up by 200%, in fact, it's gone from 1 to 3. So it gives relative context as well as trend context. I find it to be really helpful, and I appreciate the work of Sergeant Bedacy to get this to us. I would think that perhaps quarterly might be more than maybe, maybe similar. But I leave that to another discussion, another day. But I would certainly welcome this information. And the one piece that may ask administration follow up with Sergeant Bedacy is the role of criminal record checks, which in past has been, with the toll, highly time consuming for our local detachment, but I don't see a recording anywhere of the time they spend on criminal record checks. I don't know why that is, whether that is a new recording method simply doesn't answer that or have they gone out of the business of providing criminal record checks within the community? Seems helpful, but it doesn't. But in any event, I really do appreciate the report that we have received and support Council McGrath's motion to formally receive it as an interest.
Really, I would have said pretty much exactly what I already said. Thanks for the great report. It's interesting to look deeply into the part which has the appearance of being wiretaped and isn't. There is lots of information that helps me to understand what the detachment is dealing with on an ongoing basis. It pains me to hear that graffiti is rising in frequency. And now we have to add to that, apparently, the new reality signs being ripped. There's always something, I think, to Bedacy and his team for the attention and the respect. You know, he wasn't available to come this time, but I'd love to see him join us in person if that's at all possible on the next with the next edition of the report. Though I do understand that he always has more important things to do. Reporting this.
This is good. Deputy Mayor, just one other section that I wanted to point council attention to. As council know, there are regularly opportunities to meet with the leadership of K Division, usually at the UMA and the annual convention. And this could provide some some basis for those discussions. So the council point, one particular area that's in the report is the service composition. So it really is around staffing. And so I just would hold council attention to that. So when we're talking about Mr. Bedacy, Sergeant Bedacy, his ability to be here or not be here, what they may or may not be able to do in the detachment. You'll see that Jasper detachment has nine established police officer positions. Only six of those are currently filled and working, with two under what they're called soft vacancies and one for hard vacancies. So and and there are some comments about what that means in terms of financial implications. As a municipality that's paying their one model, we're somewhat shielded from those financial implications. But the vacancies, if council saw that those vacancies continue to be persistent over a long period of time, that may be something the council wished to advocate to K Division leadership to ensure those get filled. So that's another section of the report where council can be looking at, rather than just crime statistics, the vacancies and staffing augment, and so you can decide whether Jasper's being served appropriately through the dedication sources.
But thank you very much, sir. And, you know, just it's helpful to have somebody here to speak to the stats and the information and even to staffing levels. And, you know, if you look at other trends, it's a, you know, you want to ask the questions on those downward trends on on, you know, what types of mitigations were were taking place and and what caused them? And, you know, the fact that graffiti has become a number two priority compared to other communities in Alberta across Canada. We we should be consider, we should consider ourselves pretty lucky that that that's a bigger issue than, you know, that other RCMP detachments have to deal with. And that doesn't really help in filling in those vacant spots either. Because, you know, there's there's areas that have higher levels of crime and bigger issues than what we're facing here in our little reserve community. So I've been at the table a few times when we've been talking about extra staffing for Jasper. And a lot of the argument is, well, you don't have a lot of the issues that other communities demand. So, you know, congratulations to our detachment for bringing some of those those incidences and criminal behavior down. And, you know, that that's a true testament to their engagement in the community. Hopefully, that doesn't hinder filling in some of those spots, but I'm very grateful for the representation there. Thank you.
Thank you. Where we at? We vote in motion? Okay, Council McGrath, did you? Do you wish to speak? No, thank you very much. So the motion is to acknowledge the receipt of this report, see this as information. An acknowledgement to receive as a receipt of the information provided by the local RCMP. Show hands, and bear it. Thank you. Next item, motion actionless. And that is in our in our agenda and seems to be getting along with it, Mr. Bedacy.
Yes, yes, Deputy Mayor Jurno, as we approach the end of the council term, there are obviously a number of things that council wants to go on. And administration can just bring things forward as well. I'll just provide a really brief update on some events where we're suggesting changes. The first is on the first page, the skate park relocation noise level research. We had previously had August 2021. We're going to reset that to September 2021. Administration has has noise monitoring equipment and has been taking some readings at different community activities during the recent fall tournament. We're also going to travel to some communities where there are concrete skate parks to take some readings about what average noise levels are at concrete skate parks, compare that to our existing metal skate park, and compare those noise levels to existing activities that happen in Sentinel Park. So we can have a little bit of, so the community can have an informed discussion about relative levels. So council asks us to do that, we will report back with those findings in September. Administration just still needs to hop by Hinden at some point, you know, to their skate park. So that is underway. Principles for utility rate bylaw is the second, the top on the second page. We are having a bit of a workshop on that topic this afternoon. And we're recommending that we will be coming forward next month with some some more concrete details for council to consider for. And so we'll see that suggested change. And then paid parking project update. We had just been recording it as sort of in monthly installments. And just as a matter of course, we said, well, this is something that council has asked to be ongoing through the project. And so we're just changing that term to be ongoing rather than sort of repeating each time. Those are the only changes that administration is recommending today. I don't believe that we had any items that are ready to come off at this.
Questions for Mr. Given?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jurno, through you, Mr. Bedacy, just with respect to the skate or noise level research. The equipment that we have at our disposal, is that something we not own?
Deputy Mayor Jurno for Mayor Ireland, yes, it is something that we purchased, I think it was relative, it was a nominal sum to buy a noise monitoring device. And so administration could be useful in those situations.
But to know we have that resource.
Council Butler?
Just further to the research into noise across the street from Sentinel Park. And I'd just like to say that the geese are really loud.
Probably move to the schoolyard. Schoolyard. It's the school kids are coming back to school. It is not, there's a lot of geese in it in our yard. So definitely agree with that.
Deputy Mayor Jurno, we've just asked that council receive those updates.
Acknowledgement to receiving. Council Butler? So we have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the motion actionless for today's meeting. So hand on favor. Thank you. Carry on. Item number 10, council representation on boards in upcoming meetings. I'll report this Friday. There's a general meeting virtually for the Mass Canada. Folks, it's a great folks to schedule busy summer, of course. And a lot of them are from rural, so the remains to be seen only with the pen. Despite the fact that they got already indicated that they would be there on the date of meeting. It's a challenge for for administrator. Council appointments to boards and committees. Mayor?
Just to report that Friday of this week, the inclusion committee is meeting in person for training session, and now I've lost the word, but it'll be at the museum, led by Patricia Followdown. Perhaps counselor McGrath can help me a walk of cannons, plant walk, I believe is what it is. So it's it's to educate those that need education about indigenous plants in the area and their role in indigenous sites. Before we go to that, right?
Council McGrath?
Just to come to Mayor Ireland's aid, it's the it's a plant walk and fireside chat. It's a fascinating look at the indigenous connection to the land of fur. And the fireside chat will be focusing on ways that the municipality might consider indigenizing municipal spaces.
Any more reports on boards and meeting committees? Thank you. Upcoming events, we have them listed, some of them listed in our agenda. Chamber of Commerce general meeting, location to be determined on September the 8th. That must September 15th at Earl's in the afternoon. Important thing, let's forget this nomination base of November 20th deadline is at noon. And of course, election day is October 18th. Meantime, we'll have a federal election. That's an important upcoming event. Anything else? Mayor?
Just to draw to the mention of council and the public. I believe that Tourism Jasper is hosting, you know, for a concert series at Adams Commemoration Park. The first for those to be late on the evening of the 24th of September. It's free for individuals. A wonderful gesture by Tourism Jasper to make use of the facilities that were built there. The stage, CN Place and June 1st stage, and it's all for that to the community for the charge of sort of the direct mission. The work that we've all done to get this far through.
Thank you. Who decided? My time is moved to camera and for the public, there'll be no decisions, just.
Deputy Mayor Jurno, no decisions coming out of the in-camera session. There's a bit of a workshop on utility rates. There will be no rates presented to council for consideration today. And any discussion of actual rates would happen, of course, in context of regular open community council meeting. We're also going to provide an update about land rent advocacy. That is a strategic update in context of discussions with our federal partners. So none, neither of those events are coming out of camera today. And just in terms of the links, I'm a bit hesitant because we have the Zoom owl setup and council McGrath on the other end. So my suggestion council would be that we conclude this meeting at this link that we used, Council McGrath, and that we would re-log in for those people that are going to be joining us remotely, Council McGrath and a couple of members of administration for the utility rates discussion, that they would join at the link for the regular council meeting. We would only admit those people who are qualified to be quote-unquote in the room, but we would just use that existing one. And on the past, I had emailed out a separate link, the in-camera special one, it was only with me. But now that we've got our our little friend in the room here, we may have to do things a little bit differently. So we'll just do this with.
Thank you. How much time do we need to convene?
Deputy Mayor Jurno, I think that would be up to council. We are happy to take your direction. The utility rates workshop will probably be about a probably about a 20-minute presentation, likely with some discussion and questions to follow. The land rent advocacy update will be quick for maybe 10 minutes. So it's up to council whether you wish to proceed right into that or whether you'd like to take a break and.
General consensus of council, we proceed, take what, 10, 15, and then proceed there. Mayor?
Might be appropriate for us to make a motion now that we move in camera at 12:10 PM. We won't be coming back to this link in any event, so then we can discuss that and see when we're going to reconvene.
Motion to move into camera at 12:10, show hands, one favor. Thank you. So we will reconvene 15 minutes.
Let's cut this.
Well, we do need, well, we can inform Council McGrath and the other members of administration that will join us. We can inform them by email or text, Council McGrath. We can probably send you notes when council decides when they want to reconvene.